Commissioners Board Work Session. It is Wednesday, May 18th, 2022. It is 2:08 PM. We're starting off a little bit late because we had an executive session before this. This is a hybrid meeting. We're in Building 1, Room 280. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel or join by calling 360-252-9020, pin number 1234. I'm Carolina Mahia. I'm the Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Ty Mensah. Joining us via Zoom is Commissioner Gary Edwards. In the boardroom, we have County Manager Ramirez Chavez as well as Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. We have public works staff joining us today, the County Engineer Scott Lindblom. And we're going to be discussing project number 63023, Country Club Road Northwest at Green Cove Creek Culvert Replacement Preferred Alternative. And this is an informational session. So with that, I'll... Who am I passing this to? Directly to Scott?
Yeah, go ahead, Scott. Thank you. Take the lead on this one?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, County Manager Scott Lindblom, County Engineer with Public Works. And as the Chair mentioned, this is an informational briefing about our results of our alternative analysis for the Country Club Road Culvert Replacement. Next slide, please. You may recall, we did some... Public Works did some repair work on this culvert on Country Club Road that carries Green Cove Creek. We did that repair work late last year because the five-foot diameter culvert that was carrying the creek began to collapse. Part of the requirement for that repair work with our permit was to do a full replacement by the end of 2024. Next slide, please. And I think this perspective here is a kind of a good example of the challenge that we are working with right here. You can see in the very bottom of the picture, that is a six-plus-foot-tall Public Works employee in the orange, standing at the bottom of a 50-foot-high fill, road fill. And you can see the Public Works staff up above on the road, and there's even a car at the top end of that arrow. Again, that's 50 feet of soil over the creek, which, when we start talking about removing that soil, it's 35,000 cubic yards of soil that we have to remove from that. To put it in kind of a practical perspective, that's about 3,000 dump trucks, bumper-to-bumper, parked all the way from Country Club Road down to the Tilly Campus. So that's just a huge amount of material that we'll be having to deal with, no matter which of the options we look at. And before I get into the different options of the road abandonment, pedestrian bridge, open-bottom culvert or road bridge, I want to talk just briefly about the other challenges we're dealing with beside just 35,000 yards of soil. So it's easy to look at this and say, that soil carries Country Club Road. The road itself is certainly an important part of that, but we also have to look at how that road embankment is really being used. So as you're probably aware, the PUD provides water service in that area. And I believe there's about 65 homes that the PUD serves. That water main is within the road, and any work that we do on that road will have a direct impact on those customers. Puget Sound Energy has electric lines in the road. There's telecommunications lines in the road as well. The road serves for emergency access for fire, medical, and police. Also serves all the daily vehicle users, the garbage delivery, the garbage pickup, the mail delivery, parcel delivery, school buses, et cetera. And on this section of road, this section of Green Country Club Road, we see about just under 300 vehicles each day that use that section of road. And certainly, on the very bottom of this road is Green Cove Creek, which is used by chum salmon, but for years have been, for the most part, unable to pass Country Club Road through the culvert that was there. When we look at the cost for the utility relocation, as I mentioned, the... Excuse me, the water, gas, and power. While the cost for that is not necessarily the responsibility of Thurston County, it is the responsibility of those utilities. And really, those utility costs get borne by the residents that use those. So in this case, the PUD customers in that area would be in large part responsible for the water cost for that relocation work. When we look back at the emergency access as well, this Country Club Road provides a secondary access to the north end of Biscay Road. In the event that Biscay Road is closed or impacted by power lines being down on the road, trees being down, or crashes on Biscay, this is the only other access to... And I just did a very back-of-the-napkin look, but there's probably 100 homes or so that would be cut off, depending on where Biscay was... Excuse me, where Biscay could be blocked. So that access really is critical for emergency services in that area. Next slide, please. So when we look at these four different options, one of the big requirements that we have that's very prescriptive is the fish passage requirements. Department of Fish and Wildlife has a set criteria on how big of an opening we need to pass the stream to meet the fish passage requirements. In this case, we're required to have an opening that's 50 feet for the stream to pass through. Now, certainly, that's much larger than the five-foot diameter culvert that was there or the three-foot diameter slipline culvert that's in place now. And it's important to note that all of these options we looked at, every single one meets the criteria for fish passage requirements from Fish and Wildlife, meaning that all the openings for all these options will be at least, and then some exceeding, 50 feet wide. Now, when we look at it, and I'll walk through at a very high level what some of these different options are, in case they're not intuitive. The road abandonment option was one of the first we looked at. And, excuse me, this would essentially take out the entire road embankment. So again, the 35,000 cubic yards of soil, and do some native planting back on the slopes to restore what the original stream channel would look like. There would be no road access, no emergency vehicle access, no pedestrian access. And the cost of the utilities, this is the highest cost of all the options for the utilities. The numbers provided by the PUD when they did their evaluation, the cost of the PUD to provide that water service was just about $2 million. Again, that's just for the water service. And that $2 million is not reflective of the cost you see in the bottom of that table. The next one we looked at, understanding that there are some utilities in that area, we looked at a pedestrian bridge. The pedestrian... Excuse me, the pedestrian bridge would provide, obviously, pedestrian access across the bridge, across the creek, but the utilities could then be suspended underneath that bridge. The cost we put together in the evaluation we did, provided that the pedestrian bridge could accommodate emergency vehicles through use of a bollards or automatic gate. So the public would not be able to access this only by foot or by bicycle, but during emergencies, a fire truck or police or ambulance could cross the bridge. It'd be a single-lane bridge, but they would have to pass through, again, a gate or a bollard or something along those lines. We also looked at a large, open-bottom culvert, or some call it a buried bridge. This... What this allows is a full road access, so two lanes of road traffic. It would provide utilities to be buried in the road embankment, just as they are now. It does maintain emergency access, but there's real constructability concerns with this due to the geology out in that area, which would make the ability to construct it very, very challenging. Could include dewatering, of excavations down within and near the stream. And of the four different options we looked at, this presented the most challenges for construction. Finally, we looked at the road bridge. And before I get into that, I just want to touch briefly on what those costs up in the table really represent. So you can see, obviously, the 2.7 million up to 9.1 million costs. Those account for, or include, some level of contingency. It accounts for some level of inflation. What it does not account for, and we really can't anticipate, is what the bidding climate will be in two years. Certainly, two years ago, we did not expect the bidding climate we are having now with costs going up the way they are. I don't really have a crystal ball to know what might be happening in two years, but we did take reasonable assumptions and, I think, made industry-standard estimates on how we can go about doing this and providing some reasonable planning-level numbers for this. Next slide, please. So when we looked at all those different options, the option that seemed to really meet the most needs was a rebuilding or building a two-lane road bridge. As you can see on the slide, that certainly meets all the fish passage requirements, like all the options do. It is the least impact for utilities, which is not our primary, but is certainly a concern. It does provide emergency access, does accommodate utilities. And as you can see, the cost for this is still a very high cost, $8.8 million, again, including the contingency. But at this stage of the game, I think the contingency is appropriate, and I think we've taken reasonable assumptions on this as well. What this bridge would really look like, it's a 180-foot-long bridge, again, providing full access for pedestrians and vehicles. The constructability concerns on this, certainly there are some, not nearly as much so as the open-bottom culvert or the buried bridge, but it is just a very challenging site to work in. Access is very challenging, trying to bring long bridge girders through the narrow streets, narrow winding streets of the community. Looking ahead, certainly, building a project of this scope and magnitude within a two-year window in itself will be challenging, doable but challenging. We have to work with utility relocations. The utilities have to plan for this. We have to work with being able to get materials. We have to work with being able to work within the fish window in 2024. But I believe that this is really the best path forward, again, for our entire community. Next slide, please. So as we did this outreach, as we did this evaluation, we certainly did consider and solicit feedback from numerous stakeholders. We met with, on more than one occasion, the Squawson Island Tribe, Department of Fish and Wildlife Utilities. We did quite a bit of outreach with the utilities and were in close communication with them, not just the PUD, but also PSE and Lumen. We had input from the Fire Department and EMS, reached out to the Thurston County Sheriff. And also, we were in contact with Green Park Community HOA. And in fact, they provided a... They did a neighborhood survey recently, and they provided the results of that survey both to you, the Board, and we did receive a copy of that as well. Now, it's important to note that very few major projects will have 100% support from all the parties, and this one will be no different. But certainly, some of the key stakeholders identified in that table, when you start lining all those up, the Squawson Island Tribe and Department of Fish and Wildlife, I think their preferred option is certainly the road abandonment, but the ability for us to get a road bridge permitted and through... Excuse me, through those agencies, through Fish and Wildlife, I think it's not going to be presenting any problems. The utilities, as I mentioned, the cost of the utilities was extremely high, again, $2 million for the road abandonment for the PUD. We have a letter from the PUD indicating their preference for any of the other three options. Again, the cost was $2 million for the road abandonment. The others, the cost for the PUD was, if I recall, $150,000 to $300,000. Fire and EMS, you know, I think it's quite intuitive that if there is two lanes of traffic, the impact will be far less. And in a business where minutes count, even a two- or three-minute delay can be significant if somebody's having an emergency health issue. And interestingly, when we reviewed the survey that the Green... That the HOA did, I believe it was 42 out of the 50 respondents that got supported a two-lane road bridge, their preference was a large, open-bottom culvert. And there was a lot of, I guess, very little support for road abandonment and the pedestrian So there will be parties, I'm quite sure, that offer different perspectives, and some may hold very strong opinions of, say, either keeping the road in place or removing the road or somewhere in between. But we're charged with balancing the overarching needs of the community, and certainly not just road-centric, not just stream-centric, or not just utility-centric. But we really tried to balance all those different perspectives to come up with what we believe is the best path forward. And the process that we did go through, I believe, is the best path forward, and it's the best path for our community as a whole. Next slide, please. So with our study recently being done, we are now in a position to put together a funding strategy for this, because the cost is significant, you know, nearly $9 million, $8.8 million. We did apply for, at the beginning of this year, $300,000 for a grant from the Bryant Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board. That was really to support the study and the design. When we applied for that grant, when the deadline happened, we were not in a position to even know what path forward we were pursuing, so applying at that time would have been very premature, and we would not have been successful in landing that grant. We will be looking at any and all grants we could be eligible for, for fish passage or fish improvement. Typically, these awards are in the range of $50,000 to $500,000. We did receive a grant... Excuse me, $1.7 million for the Spurgeon Creek project a few years back. That was the highest on record that we've ever received for such a project. But certainly, we will be turning over every stone, looking under every log for every possible penny we can get. Also, we'll be looking at federal and state sources, but some of the details on that are still pending. We'll be considering Public Works Trust Fund, which is a loan. We did do a loan, I believe it was about 15 years ago, for the Woodland Creek Estate Sewer Project. Was successful in the sense that we were able to get funding for that critical project. So that is an option for us as well, which we'll be looking into. We'll be looking into any sources of county funds, including asking the Board for REIT to support the project at some level. How much that level is, at this point, it's a bit premature to say. But we will be, I can say with 100% confidence, we will be looking for every possible source of funding we can get to pursue this project. And with that, I'm sure there are questions, and I'm sure there's feedback, so I will leave the board open to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Can we stop sharing the... Thank you. Okay, questions? Commissioner Edwards?
I guess, did you look at a boring machine to bore underneath there, Scott? Was that part of your review?
We did not look at that. We have heard from other agencies that have tried that, that that can be extremely challenging and very costly. I know the City of Olympia did that on East Bay Drive years ago, and they had some real challenges with that. It can work, but it is extremely, extremely expensive.
I mean, when you say more than $9 million or something, is that what I'm hearing?
We didn't look into that, but we can certainly get a kind of a back-of-the-napkin gut check on that from our consultant, who's done some... I believe they've done some of that type of work before.
And then, what... You know, what we're up against, you said there's a five-foot culvert. It's now got an insert in it, so it's a three-foot culvert, basically. And the need is the 50-foot-wide daylight or whatever you're talking about. And so, is that the Cadillac, and we could still get by with a five-foot if we could figure out a way? Or do we need a 10-foot would be adequate to let a few salmon up? Or how long has it been since salmon are using it? Or are they still using it? What's the biggest volume of water that you have go through there ever? Or is the whole 50-foot all based on the salmon need?
Yeah, great question. The requirements we have from Fish and Wildlife is 50-foot minimum. So it is, you know, it's important to recognize that when the... Part of the calculation for that, so we can't look at the width of the water going through the pipe, and we have to look at the bankful width. And so when you look at a stream channel, in this case, the average stream channel width, I believe, is about 40 feet. So the prescriptive requirements are that, to size your stream opening, you look at the width of the stream times, I believe it's 1.2, then you add two feet to that, which that's how we came up with the 50 feet. And so right now, we've got a stream channel that varies in width, but the average width is about 40 feet. That all necks down to a, right now, a three-foot diameter pipe. Then, once it gets past that, it expands. And so when you look at the stream, say, today, you won't see 40 feet, a 40-foot-wide stream, but you have to look at the entire stream bank, so that area between the ordinary high watermark on one side, all the way over to the other.
And what's the legal issue, I guess? That's kind of my concern, that if we don't have the money to do it, what's the alternative? They sue you and take away your road fund and do it themselves? Or what happens on these type of things?
Well, Ian, when we were doing the emergency repair last year, one of the conditions of the permit was that we committed to doing that repair within two years. And we stretched that out as far as we could. And so, we, the county, committed ourselves to doing that, and we really did not have much option in that.
Well, I mean, I can't accept that as an option, is that you don't have an option. Because if you didn't have the money, if it was $100 million, what would you do? I mean, at what point does it become impossible to do it per the Cadillac, I guess, versus And what is the legal consequence that you come up against? I mean, if you go to the legislature and say, hey, we'd like to do this, we don't have money to do it, are they going to help? Or are they going to say, well, we're going to condemn all those homes and put all those people in jail or make them pay for it? I'm just coming... You know, I'm throwing out stupidity there, because there has to be some other answer of what it might take to accomplish the mission. It can't be just one or nothing. So I... Even though you committed to it, okay, well, we all do... I sure want to get to the moon, but it's going to take me a while. So I don't know the answer, and I'm... I really, I'm going to need more information, I have to say, before I'm going to be ready to do something. But that's only one of me. There's a couple other Commissioners.
Commissioner Mensah, questions?
Well, one of my questions was exactly what Commissioner Edwards has just been asking, and I agree with him. What, you know, I can imagine how we can come up with $2.7 million. I don't understand how we're going to come up with $8.8 million. That's based on, Scott, you said the highest amount we've ever gotten from one of these grants is $1.7. I have input from, one of the ways we get funding from our... For our culvert projects is through the salmon recovery process, and I have an email here that I shared with the County Manager from the RIA 13 Lead Entity Coordinator, who went through a lot of the funding. She's like...
Scott has that.
Yeah, so, I mean, she's describing how, even if we got all of the money, captured all of the money that's available for Thurston County, we'd have like 10% of the bridge alternative, you know, and the amount of money. And we've got, meanwhile, out of the 11 priority culverts for this, seven of them are in Thurston County that's going to take $20 million just to address. So anyway, that's one part of my question, and it sounds like we maybe need more information, because I don't understand... I have the same question, like, what if we can't do it? What does a commitment on a permit mean? And we just say, can't do it? And then what happens? We're in front of the court in some way, or we're... We get, you know, we don't get funding? Or I remember a few years ago, we were out of compliance with the college, so we weren't eligible for these little grants for planning, or, you know, there's all sorts of different consequences for things. And I don't... I need to understand what the penalty will be if we don't meet that, because depending on what that penalty is, depends on how big of a factor I'm going to weigh the cost, right? I mean, if the penalties, you know, so I think that goes without saying. One question is, and I think I know the answer, but these dollar amounts do not factor in, Scott, the dollar amounts from the chart, let's say $8.8 million, that's not telling me... That's not including the cost to the various utilities and what... And that might fall on the backs of citizens. Is that correct?
That's correct. Those costs do not include utility costs.
Okay. And then, one question on the road... So I've heard conflicting information on the road abandonment option and what it would do to emergency response. I, at one point, I just heard somebody say it would have two minutes, and then that the Citizens came in and talked to me on Tuesday and said, it's going to be five minutes. So what is that number in terms of the added emergency response for those folks if they have to use Biscay Road?
Yeah, my turn to Marcus Dorvick or Teresa first, since we had that opportunity to meet with the emergency responders. Marcus, Teresa?
My... Hello, Marcus Dorvick's Senior Civil Engineer. I believe that is two minutes, from my recollection of that meeting, Scott.
That's a little bit of a hard thing to define, because it depends on what the response is. If you're talking about an ambulance response, there, you're adding a few minutes worth of time. If you're talking about a fire, they have to tender all the water, and it creates a whole another layer of time and effort, because they have to figure out where they can get the water and what the route is, and the roads are kind of windy. And so there's, I mean, just looking at it, the Fire Department did send a response that laid out what the issues are, and we can share that. But those are some of the factors. So at a high level, you know, just looking at the road network, two minutes for a non-fire tender.
Okay. And the Citizen Group, and I'd like to see what the Fire Department said. And the Citizen Group mentioned the fact that the road, and you just said the road's windy, Teresa, and they said there's a point at which the road dips down. And I don't... I intended to drive this road, and I still will, but I just haven't gotten to yet, to kind of just eyeball it, because that really helps me sometimes. But it sounds like you're agreeing that there's some... It's not apples-to-apples, I guess. The Biscay Road has a windiness or some natural features that make it less viable for, say, fire response than Country Club is currently. Is that accurate?
That was the emergency in the meeting that Marcus and I attended. That was part of the discussion, and I was just quickly trying to pull up... We asked them to go ahead and put that right, and which they did. And I was trying to pull that up, and I don't know if you have that in front of you, Marcus? I couldn't find it right off the top of my head.
Yeah, I have their email.
Maybe you can answer that, based on what they put in that?
Yeah, just to reiterate, the... So Biscay's a north-south route, so as soon as that connects into the other end of Country Club Road, there's a sharp turn. So there is some access and grade problems with that. So they did reiterate those concerns.
Okay. That's vague for what I need. Access and grade problems. I mean, we have to really know, like, can a fire truck or an ambulance get where it needs to go? Is... Or what does that mean, a grade problem? Problem, how big a problem? Problem for who? Problem that could create what kind of situation?
When I was referring to that as a turning movement, so they can make the turn when there's no traffic, but we'd most likely have to modify that intersection to make it, so that way the fire engines and other emergency vehicles can make that turning movement.
So that would be a cost on top of the cost that we're... That's on the chart, right? Or is that fact...
No, that would be... That's correct.
Thank you for...
What is...
One sec. Commissioner Edwards, I'll get you. One of my questions is, I appreciate the questions Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Mensah have asked, because I was just trying to get the full information on this. And so, my question, I guess I'm going to ask about the utility access, right? And with the road abandonment, if that were to happen, we've been hearing a lot about this utility access. Who would pay that cost? Would it be the citizens of Green Cove would pay that cost, basically, to reroute the utilities? utilities?
It would be the, the PUD. The PUD itself, yeah.
And, and the PUD would have to, sorry, to add on to that, though, the PUD would have to, um, backcharge their customers for that, and that's a concern for the, for that community, because it would be additional cost, because the PUD's, um, resources are limited, but their customer rates are what pays them, uh, pays all of their budget, and so they would charge, they too would seek any additional funding that's out there, but there doesn't seem to be much funding for this type of thing, so they would have to very, very likely increase the rates to the, those customers.
Um, Commissioner Edwards, you had an additional question?
Yes, uh, I don't know if weather conditions maybe had been taken into consideration on that alternative access. And then, I never did hear maybe from Scott what the normal water flow is, uh, through that creek, and again, what happens if we just don't have the money to do it? What's the bottom line there?
So as, as far as the flow through the creek, I don't know what the, the volume or the flow rate is, if that's what you're, you're wondering.
Yeah, well, if it's flowing all the time, or seasonal creek, or that type of thing, is that part of it? What's the volume that if this thing, uh, is the three-foot insert gonna handle it for the next 100 years if we don't do it? I realize it's not gonna be friendly to, as friendly to the environment as doing the Cadillac, uh, I got that, but what's, what's the comparison? And, uh, is it gonna wash the road out?
So we, we did have that three-foot pipe in place over this past winter, and in the early January storms, we, we were seeing water back up on the upstream side of the road emankment, and I recall, if I recall right, that was, it backed up about 10 feet or so over the top of the slip lines of the three-foot diameter culvert. So water did back up, because the pipe did not have the capacity to carry all that water. And will that last 100 years? Um, it's, it's unlikely. Um, I think if we were to make it try to last a long time, it would have a, uh, dramatic impact on the stream downstream. Um, it would not allow fish to continue up past Country Club Road, um, and it would really turn into a complete blockage, because I don't believe in, we've got, uh, some staff here that know fish better than I do, but I, I'd be surprised if fish could pass through that three-foot diameter culvert today, during the winters.
You know, just as a follow-up, over on Rainier Road, the railroad did a culvert in an area that used to have a bridge across it, and then, uh, some, I don't know, it burnt down or something, and they filled that whole thing in with dirt. It's on one of our trails, and then eventually, they did do a boring through there somehow, I don't know how they did it. But, uh, are you familiar with that, over on, uh, just off of Rainier Road? I know the county manager runs through there quite a bit. Talked about it, so.
I'm, I'm very familiar with that. I think the difference is, uh, this is a stream, a live stream.
Oh, yeah, I, that's, I mean, but that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, versus a, a, an actual trail, where the boring machine could probably operate a little bit better.
Yeah, anyway, I mean, I, I just haven't heard enough information. For me to support something, it's gonna take a lot more discussions, or one type of-
Yeah, certainly will take, uh, you know, good questions today, and, uh, uh, another follow-up meeting briefing will be certainly necessary, because at this point, there's not a decision required by the board, it's just information to introduce the, the, the four options. I do have a question on, uh, slide number four. And you, you will describe the, the green and red dots. Uh, the question that I have on the, on the red dots is a need not met. And, uh, what, what is the need that has not been met? Because for instance, on the road access, there is an alternative route, a, a, a detour route that can be used to provide access, so they will not be cut out, for instance. And the utility access, although the cost will be significant, but it's not like the need will not be met, because it will be a cost associated with detouring, again, those utilities. And the same in, in the emergency response. Uh, the emergency response will not be caught up, it will be additional time associated with a detour. Um, maybe suggestion in, in, in this graph, um, as we move forwards, is, is mitigating circumstances in which, uh, each of those alternatives could be done. It's not all or nothing, because there's, uh, alternatives, uh, it has an impact, an impact on the operations, an impact on the access, but it's not all or nothing, it's, it's mitigating circumstances, the, uh, one of those alternatives could be assessed. Uh, just a food for thought on that one.
No, that, that's actually a really, really good comment, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, so it's 2:44, we do have a citizen here. Uh, I'm not sure if you'd like to provide, uh, some comment if the other commissioners are okay with that? I have one nod, Commissioner Edwards. Are you okay with that?
I'm always with the prerogative of the chair.
Uh, if you would come up here, so the microphones can, can pick you up, and you can introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, um, thank you. I apologize for coming only at 2:30, because I thought the, um, I thought the, this was to start at 3:00, but I do have some information, um, that we've received as the Homeowners Association. My name is Mariella Cummings, and I'm a resident, um, of that Green Park Community Club, and with my colleagues, we're the ones that did the survey, the results of which we, we sent back to you. Um, there was a question about, um, the PUD and cost. What we have been told, and I've spoken to people there, is that, um, no matter, that they have the resources to deal with a temporary delivery of water to the 70 or so of us downstream that, um, that would be necessary no matter what option were selected, and they estimated that cost to be about $300,000, but that they could cover that. What they said, though, was that depending on the op, the option selected, the, uh, cost to them to permanently, if the solution were not either the vehicular bridge or the pedestrian bridge under which they could put the water lines, they had two choices. They could tunnel from either end and sufficiently below the stream bed and up on the other side, that would be their first choice, um, but they're not sure that will work. And if that doesn't work, they would have to identify another source of water for everyone from the, the, the culvert down. Um, and that they estimated the cost for that would be between $1 and $3 million, um, and that, I guess the $1 million was the dread, I, I don't know, they said, yeah, but if they have to do another well to support our water, there's only one location in, that readily available in the neighborhood, that is what is our Homeowners Association Community Beach, and they would have to put a well there, and it is within 50 feet of both the sound and the stream, and they were concerned about saline encroachment and what would happen that way. But they have, they, the last time we talked to them, which was about a month or so ago, they didn't have a solution if, um, for, for a source of water. Back to the $1 to $3 million cost to reattach on a permanent basis, um, the, the water supply, what, uh, their representative told me is that no matter what, water rates will go up a minimum of 3% because of the construction costs, and could go up as much as 27%, and that the cost of that final remediation, um, would be spread among all of the PUD subscribers, and there are just under 10,000 households and businesses, according to their website, that will, no matter what, get some sort of increase, but it could be quite significant. And I'm not aware whether the other PUD, um, users are aware that, that their rates would be impacted as, as well. Um, the other thing about the three-foot temporary culvert, we were told that the county was able to install that, that, um, because of the erosion as a temporary measure, but that some agency had said that a permanent solution, not the three-foot temp, had to be completed by the end of 2024, and that the construction timeline might be as much as a year, whichever solution was determined and ultimately funded. Um, they, after they installed the three-foot temporary, it started to cause erosion of the bank distal to it, into our part of the stream, and was eroding the bank and their homes, including mine, that are on, on the edge, because the force of the water coming through the three-foot was so much greater than what had been the five-foot diameter before. So, um, it's my understanding that fish, that, that the force of the three-foot culvert was heavy enough that the fish couldn't get up, and that, that the, the pressure to do something, here's the rest of our team, again, we thought it started at 3:00, it started at 2:00, and we're just winding up, so, apologize for that. Sorry, we, we, we want to be held. So that's what we have been told, and obviously you need to do some more fact-finding around that.
Thank you. Okay, it is 2:40, not 2:50. Um, with that, um, we'll be scheduling another session to have more discussions. There were several questions that, um, we still need answered, and, uh, some more information that commissioners need. So we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.